Received a copy of the minutes. Does anyone have any additions or corrections on them after review?
I have a correction on the third page, page three six five. Mr. Garavaglia announced the next meeting will be May twelfth, twenty twenty five. Should be June sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
I got complacent by that page, you're all caught. It just seems like it's just a simple set of minutes. I didn't even get that far before I was like, oh, this is great.
Any other corrections? Is there a motion to approve these units with stated corrections? There a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? Motion carried.
May I ask who seconded that?
That was me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any comments from the public? This is specifically for matters that are not on tonight's agenda. All right, asking your question, can you state your first and last name and spell your last name and state your address?
Okay, my name is Lee Connor. That's C O N N O R. And it's two Tower Hill Road in Morris Plains.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi.
And I'm coming before you as a longtime resident of Morris Plains. And I wanted to officially bring to the planning board's attention. A group of residents has formed a group called Plan Better Morris Plains. We first officially announced it at the May fifteenth Borough Council meeting. And then a volunteer taken video of it is up on our YouTube channel. So what is Plan Better Morris Plains? It's grassroots, it's resident-led, on our own time, our own dime. We're committed to a safe, sustainable, forward-looking development and land use plan for the borough of Morris Plains. Over recent years, there have been some truly painful controversies over land use and development in Morris Plains. The Mon Fragrance Factory proposed near residential neighborhoods in twenty eighteen. The Storage Warehouse on the old Acme property in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And most recently, the approval by a five-four vote of a two-lane fast food restaurant from a major international chain on our overburdened two-lane Main Street. We believe that Morris Plains can do better. By being proactive and open to new ideas, we can retain our town's wonderful character while planning wisely for the future. This is not a simple task, especially not here in densely populated northern New Jersey and highly desirable Morris Plains. Your job as a planning board is a difficult one, and we recognize that. Still, we believe there's a way for concerned and informed residents and well-meaning and experienced elected officials to work together to create a vision for the future of Morris Plains as we go into our second century very soon. To that end, we've been reaching out to numerous resources, including elected and appointed officials here in town, similar local groups for sustainable development, the many smart planning resources available for New Jersey towns, and the New Jersey Highlands Coalition. We invite and strongly urge anyone who is interested in constructive, feasible, workable ideas to join us in this effort. You can expect to hear more from Plan Better Morris Plains soon. Goals, timeline, measures of success, we will present all of these in the near future. In the meantime, please visit planbettermp.com for more information. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to working with you.
That was well presented. I liked it.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Schroeder, S C H R O E D E R, ninety-seven Maple Avenue. So at a prior council meeting, I asked some questions about why Ron Kelly is no longer on the planning board. I think a lot of people in the community are asking these questions and continue to. It was suggested that I continue asking those questions once everybody had had some time to look into things. And I had some time to look into things as well. I understand Mr. Brewer and Mayor Carr are not here, so maybe we still continue this conversation. But I did want to get these questions out there and keep the conversation going because I think it's an issue that a lot of people really, really care about understanding better. For context, these are questions that a lot of people are asking in the community. And just to be clear, I'm asking these questions because I believe in the town and its residents. And I have confidence that this planning board can make good choices for our town. I want to have confidence that things are done in an above-board manner and in a fair manner. So when I see a situation that looks unfair or strange, I feel compelled to speak up and better understand how the process works because that's what engaged citizenship is all about. So hopefully, there is an explanation for all of this that makes sense, but we just haven't heard it yet. So I'm just keeping my conversation going. So I tried to piece together the timeline as best I could based on publicly available information. What I see is that Mr. Kelly joins the planning board in January twenty twenty-three as a class four member, but then started working at the Community Center in September twenty twenty-three, which is technically prohibited according to the description of class four membership. I also saw that Ms. Steckert joined the Shade Tree Commission in January twenty twenty-three and then joined the planning board as a class four member in January twenty twenty-four. If I understand correctly, this dual appointment would also be inconsistent with the description of a class four member. Neither of these misclassifications could have been remedied because Mr. Drutslar, who's already a class-two member, and there can only be one of those if I understand correctly. So basically, for the entirety of twenty twenty-four, Mr. Kelly and Ms. Steckert were non-compliant for their assigned classes. At the council meeting, it was suggested that the Steckert misclassification was a typo, but I don't think that is the case because she was class four up until at some point in January. Actually, as of June twenty twenty-four, she was still class four. I have a snapshot from the Wayback Machine. And then as of May twenty twenty-five, her classification was changed to class-two. I don't know exactly when that took place. That's one question that I have.
It was, that was done actually in, I believe it was in January, February at the council meeting.
Okay.
So I think if you look back at the reorg meeting, I think that's when she was reclassified as a class-two.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that, of this year.
Of this year, correct.
Yeah. So oversights and mistakes happen, right? And I think this was a good faith oversight. And but what people are trying to understand really is why a better solution couldn't have been reached that allowed Mr. Kelly to stay on the planning board. So I do have some questions. I don't know if the people with answers are here, but I'm just going to read them out so everybody understands the questions that we have in the community. And maybe we can keep things going that way. So I was curious when the town became aware of these misclassifications? I don't know if we know that yet. Okay. You answered my question, Bill, about when the website was updated to reflect the change. It sounds like it happened shortly after the reorg meeting. Once Mr. Drutslar left, there was the class-two classification available, so she got that. One question I had is, given that Mr. Kelly had sort of seniority on the planning board, how was the decision made to assign that class-two membership to Steckert versus Mr. Kelly?
So I don't, I don't know that that's a question anybody up here currently could answer.
Understood.
Because just, just a reminder, right, the appointees to the planning board are mayoral appointees. The, when the council reviews it, the council basically just looks at it. But they are mayoral appointees, so.
Who by the way is right behind me.
I remember he may have some help.
There he is.
How was the graduation?
I think everybody graduated.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Do we throw you an hot seat or are we waiting for you to catch up?
I'm always in the hot seat, so I'm used to it.
I'm following up on some of the questions I asked at the last council meeting about Mr. Kelly. So I, you know, I understand that if I, if I'm understanding correctly and hearing correctly.
Do you want to, do you want to step back a little bit so Mr. Brewer, Mayor can?
I'm just.
Sure, yeah. So I mean, really, I guess the question a lot of people are asking is why did Mr. Kelly have to leave the planning board, right? If I understand, I think the position is that he effectively resigned upon accepting employment with the Community Center, right? That would mean that his seat is vacant, but why couldn't he just vacate his role at the Community Center and then be reappointed? I think a lot of people are wondering that.
I think that would be a question that you should ask Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly was given several options of what could be done, so I really think that that's a question that Mr. Kelly could answer. And why he made whatever decision he made.
Okay. I guess, you know, I'm not a land use attorney, but I have been a lawyer close to twenty years. And my observation is that these good faith unintentional mistakes can typically be remedied in a pretty pragmatic way that honors the intent of the parties. So it just feels strange to me, and that's why I'm here asking questions. And I think to the rest of the community as well, that there wasn't a more pragmatic way to address this. I'm sure it was an honest mistake in a way that would allow him to remain on the planning board.
I think there are statutes and case law that Andy Brewer looked up, and I'm sure that the suburb can speak to those. It wasn't just something that we can do, right, so.
So briefly, because I'm not that familiar with the situation, but he did give me a memo that there is a case, if you'd like, I can give you the citation, that speaks to the order of how it happened. So the fact that he was on the planning board and then took the position with the Community Center, by doing that, he vacated the earlier position. He would have to be reappointed, is my understanding. But he would have to actually be reappointed to the position, not just, okay, I'm going to give this up and go back onto the board.
Okay.
And the reverse was true for Ms. Steckert because she was on the Shade Tree Commission first. And then by taking the planning board position, she vacated her position with the Shade Tree Commission.
Okay. But then I guess she had reappointed.
She's still in the Shade Tree. But she's no longer a class-four member, correct?
No, she's a class-two.
Right, so the class-four can serve in another.
Right.
Class-four has to be general members of the public, so once she became a class-two, then she is obligated to have a position with the municipality.
And Mr. Kelly was offered to be reappointed?
So again, this is, that's why I don't like going over this kind of stuff because that is not my understanding about being reappointed. And so I think probably what would be best is to wait for Mr. Brewer. Mr. Brewer laid out an email. I don't have it in front of me. I'm going to go again, probably, as to why, what was done. He related it out to myself and John Araya after that, after that council meeting. As to his position.
Like I said, I think everybody just wants transparency into the process, right? And we don't, we don't have the legal memos. We don't know what the conversations were like. And I think people just want to have confidence that things are being done in the right way and in a fair way.
Yeah, so as far as Mr. Brewer, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Brewer, but what he had told me, we cannot go back and reappoint him.
Interesting, okay.
So I don't know what she's saying, but it's probably best for you and Mr. Brewer so he can state the statutes.
Could you speak into the microphone?
So he can state the statutes and what case law he was looking at when he made his decision.
So even, even if he left his position at the Community Center, he would not be eligible to be reappointed for some reason?
So my understanding is that the minute that he accepted the position at the Community Center, he was not a member of the planning board. Not that he couldn't vote, but he was not a member of that planning board anymore and could not be reappointed.
Even if he quit his job?
I'm not sure about that. Yes, I don't know. And like I said, I'm just reading out the memo, yeah. His memo says that he's, by resigning from his employment, he's not automatically reappointed. We can't just fix it that way.
Right.
So I think we have like the same idea about maybe.
Now that you're saying that, that is correct.
Right, he doesn't automatically go back to.
And obviously, it's up to Mr. Kelly, but like I said, like we as the public, it's more about understanding the process. So if he truly didn't want back on, understandable. But I think somewhere under the impression that it was not his decision.
You'd have to ask Mr. Kelly why he came up with this decision.
And then also, while we're talking about wearing multiple hats, is there any conflict with Ms. McCluskey being on the traffic committee as a class-four member?
It's not, it's not, this is just a bad hot committee.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So I left, I'm coming late, but I did leave some pamphlets out here that we did for our affordable housing, just the overview the other night. If anybody wants them, I'd be free to come up and get it.
Any further questions? Then I'll close that part of the meeting. Committee reports, Minor Site Plan Committee, any updates? Oh, we forgot bills. Karen, what happened, Karen?
Well, I'm Karen.
You're still good.
You're fine.
You're good.
You're fine.
Yeah, I'm right.
You're fine, I'm sorry.
Minor set, minor site? Master Plan Review Committee?
No.
Of now? Okay, then I'll close that portion. Correspondents and bills?
We have three. In no particular order. Purchase order two zero two five one zero six seven, Mazzaretti.
Marazidi.
Marazidi, thank you. Falcon, LLP. General Services in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Sorry. One million?
Wow, not that lucky.
I'm sorry, unit price versus total. One thousand, one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Try to read, kid. Purchase order two zero two five zero nine zero three for affordable housing in the amount of nine hundred and ninety dollars. Sorry, for Phillips Price and Greigel, Greigel?
Greigle.
Greigle. And last is purchase order two zero two five one zero zero zero. Anderson and Denzler, Engineering Services, and that comes to three hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty cents. We need two votes for approval or objection. I'll approve.
Look for a second.
I'll second.
Karen, roll call.
Mr. Organblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Bezzel?
Yes.
Mr. Eustis?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mrs. McCluskey?
Yes.
Okay, then I will close that portion of the agenda. Karen, we have no new applications, correct?
Nope.
So I'll close that portion of the agenda. Do we have any old business?
Yes. All right, so the, you'll see as part of your package tonight, that's included there, there's two documents there. They're, they are a Morris Plains Planning Board application and zoning board adjustment application, the revised applications. The checklist review committee, which included myself as Bill Ryden, our engineer, Dave Schultz, Chair of the Zoning Board Adjustment, and Mike Garavaglia, Chair of the Planning Board, had several meetings regarding our land development application. The committee's goal was to simplify the document, inviting all the necessary items needed between zoning requirements and planning board requirements, as well as provide a simpler and online accessible form for the applicant or resident submission. Our current land development document is thirty-seven pages long and has many redundancies within the application. The two documents in the package tonight contain all the same requirements as our current applications. However, the information is better organized and more easy to understand from an overall applicant perspective. So in summary, there, we now have the following. A Morris Plains Planning Board or Zoning Board of Adjustment Application for subdivisions and site plan review and a checklist specific for each. And a Morris Plains Zoning Board of Adjustment Application for variance relief and a checklist specific for this. These two applications now separate zoning board requests from planning board requests and provide the applicant or resident with an easy transition to the appropriate board for application, review, and approval. The zoning board had already started reviewing in April, and I believe they are gathering input from their board. And Mr. Garavaglia had sent these over to Mr. Brewer. He had reviewed and had no legal comments. So now it's before the planning board to review. And I would like to ask for any comments or questions by our next meeting. And that is all I have for old business.
Anything else for old business? Okay, then I'll close that portion. I'll move on to new business. Master Plan Amendment to the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. One of the roles of the planning board is the adoption, reexamination of amendment of the Borough Master Plan. Tonight, the board will be considering an amendment to the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan portion of the Borough Master Plan. Karen, is everything in order related to noticing the state, county, surrounding towns as required?
Yes.
I'll ask Ms. Keller to walk us through the planning methodology. And Ms. Hubbard, can you please swear Ms. Keller in?
Should please rise. Just so the testimony you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
For the record, can you state your full name, spelling your last name?
Sure, my name is Kate Keller. My last name is K E L L E R.
Can you just provide the board with your qualifications?
Sure. Hi, everybody. I have been here before. I believe this applies to you. I'm a principal with Phillips Price Rigel, Keller LLC, based in Hoboken. I am Liz's partner. I've worked with her over the years with a number of tasks in Morris Plains. Most recently, you know, we've all been involved in preparation of fair share plans throughout the state. And I'm here tonight to present yours.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I will, I will just go through this. So as this board is aware, this, the state is currently in what is known as the fourth round of the affordable housing. This is based on the original Mountmorel decisions back in the seventies and eighties. And there's been a long process that at one point involved COA, the Council on Affordable Housing. And now, as of last year, twenty twenty-four, there is a new process in place that dictates how the fourth round is managed. So I'm going to go through, you know, just really where we are, where the borough stands with affordable housing, what their obligations are for the fourth round, and how we're going to meet those. So as the Vice Chair stated in his opening, this is a public hearing for the adoption of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, which is an element of the borough's master plan. So, you know, this is, you know, we think of it a little differently because it's the housing element, but this is really another element of the master plan, and so all the procedures are similar for this board. So the plan that you have seen in draft form was prepared in order to comply with the fourth round legislation. And in twenty twenty-four, the governor signed into law what was known as Bill Number eight four slash S fifty, what we are calling in our report, the Amended Fair Housing Act. And essentially, this eliminated COA. COA had been, you know, had been really pushed aside as of twenty fifteen, but this is really what abolished it. It set new standards for establishment of municipal fair share obligations for the fourth round, which is July twenty twenty-five through June twenty thirty-five and subsequent rounds. And it created the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program to oversee, basically manage this process for the municipalities. So just to see where we are today and how we got here is that the the DCA, Department of Community Affairs, were tasked with, and this is all per the state statute. So when I say per the amended FHA, this is all part of that package of new laws, or that new law that was adopted in twenty twenty-four. So per that statute, the DCA, Department of Community Affairs, state agency, was obligated to issue their calculations for the municipality's present need and prospective need. And this was for all municipalities in the state of New Jersey. This was issued in October twenty twenty-four. The present need, that's what's sometimes known as the rehab obligation. That's the number of, you know, existing deficient housing units in the municipality that are occupied by low, moderate-income households. Morris Plains did not have a present need obligation. That number was calculated as zero. And that's a very complex calculation that involves, you know, a lot of census data, and they do, they do a lot of detail. And in Morris Plains, that number was considered zero. So that was the obligation for the present need. The prospective need, that's really the new construction or the new provision of affordable housing obligation that we are addressing in this plan. And that's a projection of the need for low and moderate-income housing. And that's based on development in the community growth. It's based on the amount of land that's available, et cetera. And so it looks at that as the fair share of the regional standard for each municipality. So as mentioned, the, October twenty twenty-four, DCA released their numbers. And the present need in Morris Plains, as stated, was zero. The prospective need was one hundred and thirty-seven. And the way that the law was written is that these numbers were non-binding. This was DCA's first attempt at calculating it. The municipalities were permitted to take a look at it. And by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, had to adopt a binding resolution, either, you know, stating their participation in the Affordable Housing Program in the process, and if they thought the number was miscalculated, preparing a new number there. So that is what Morris Plains did. January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, resolution was adopted in which the borough stated they would be participating in the program, which is how we are here today. And we, and our firm, did some recalculations that set the present need still at zero. We accepted that number, but sought to adjust the prospective need down from one thirty-seven to one oh six. And this was essentially based on our review of lands that they had stated were developable that we pushed back on because they were really not developable for reasons that, you know, sometimes it was environmental constraints, sometimes it was township-owned property that was restricted from development, et cetera. So this was the initial calculation. As part of the dispute resolution process, the New Jersey Builders Association, which is a trade group of builders, mostly home builders and residential developers, filed a timely objection, which had to be in by February twenty-eighth of this year. So they requested that the borough find the prospective need to be one hundred and thirty-seven units, AKA the original number. The borough held a settlement conference with Ms. Laney, with the professionals, with the, with those from the Builders Association in March of this year. That was held with the program judge, which is a special judge, a judge that was appointed to the town by the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program and the special adjudicator for the borough. Again, a professional planner who was also assigned by the state. And they failed to reach a settlement, but the program judge issued their recommendation on April third of this year in which they agreed with our calculation, with the borough's calculation of one hundred and six units. And the Mountmorel judge for the county subsequently confirmed that on May thirteenth. So it took until May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, to get this, to get it official. But the state and all the judges of the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program agreed with the borough's stated number of one oh six. So the numbers that we're working with here for the fourth round, present need, rehab, again, zero units, prospective need, one hundred and six units. So that's where we started off that in preparing this Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. So just to go through the components of this plan, one of the things that we had to do, we had to look back on the prior rounds, which would be really the second round, which was nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-nine. And then the third round, which included what they call the gap period when COA wasn't really functional. wasn't really functional, and that was from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty twenty-five. So, um, Morris Plains has addressed their obligation for those prior rounds. Um, everything has either been constructed or the township is, um, has every, fully believes that they will be constructed and still represent, um, a ti- an appropriate, uh, provision of affordable housing. So we got that out of the way, we were left with preparing our new plan. And so we actually, from the third round, have a carryover of two credits. So just to go through what we have prepared in this twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty, twenty thirty-five, fourth round plan, um, again, present need, there's no obligation, but the borough will continue to participate in the Morris County Housing Rehabilitation Program. Um, this is a county program that provides funds to income-eligible households, um, to address major failures of systems, you know, heating, HVAC, um, you know, plumbing in their home to get them up to, um, a better standard of living in their primary residence. So the borough will continue to participate in that. And then, um, in order to address the prospective need, that's the one hundred and six units, the first thing that we did was we prepared, um, what is known as a vacant land adjustment. And this is a method of looking at your vacant land in your town. Um, it's, it's, it's been part of the rules for affordable housing for about, since I think about nineteen ninety-nine. And so the, um, this was done in the last round and we did it again here. So, um, so vacant land adjustment looks at the fact that this is a small, built-out community, there's limited land available for the development of low and moderate income housing at densities that, um, are what, what the state looks at for inclusionary development. This is mostly due to environmental constraints, um, and then other land, that's open spaces, reserved for open space per the master plan, per the open space plan. And so those are not considered to be developable lands per the vacant land adjustment. So we did the vacant land adjustment and you can, this is included in, um, the, I'm not going to go through all the properties that were, um, considered to be developable, but you can find those on page, what is it, what do you mean? Um, those are on page thirty-one of these, of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. And in total, that came out to be eight point two-six developable acres. And that includes lands that we, we subtracted the, um, environmental constraints, we subtracted deed restrictions, et cetera. So we, when you make your, when you, in order to, uh, use, utilize a vacant land adjustment, you have to then calculate a realistic development potential. And that is defined as, um, what, how many units could be developed, assuming that all of those eight point two-six acres were rezoned for inclusionary development at the presumptive minimum density of six units per acre with a set aside of twenty percent. So in real term, you know, simpler terms here, you have eight point two-six acres, we use the presumptive density of six units per acre, um, which has been, um, established in a lot of the, the case law and a lot of the, um, the past, um, law, uh, rules regarding COA, and Petcoa in the past and now this fourth round. And the total number of dwelling units that could be developed was about forty-nine and a half, forty-nine point five-seven, six point eight point two-six. So when you, you take that forty-nine point five-seven number and you, you see what, how many affordable housing units you could get at a set aside of twenty percent, and that number came out to ten units. So the realistic development potential in Morris Plains as part of the fourth round plan has been calculated at ten units. Um, and that means, um, what could be developed based on that vacant land. So the first part of addressing the fourth round compliance is how to, compliance mechanisms that will address this ten-unit realistic development potential. And this was, this is really the, the crux of the plan, these are the units that the borough has to provide. And the way that this was calculated, or to be, the way that, the way that, that the borough will be complying with this, per this plan, is that there's a surplus, there's a carryover of two units from the third round, basically two extra units got developed, um, that were not part of the third round plan. There is an existing ARC group home, which there, um, there is expansion, this, the zoning board approved an expansion for that in twenty, uh, twenty-three, which, uh, recently received certificates of occupancy. So that's two bedrooms there and then there's two bonus credits that the township, excuse me, that the borough can take for that property, um, which I'll, I'll explain a little bit more, but basically the new affordable housing law, um, re, re, kind of recalibrated the bonuses that were available to take. And so supportive housing, uh, group homes, et cetera, special needs, each bedroom is worth two, is where, that gets an extra bonus credit. So for the ARC home, um, for the new expansion, four, four credits were available there. Um, and then there is a new, um, supportive special needs facility called R.A.M., New Jersey, um, that, that is actually a six-bedroom facility, um, which would have been able to take, um, all of those six bonus credits, except for the fact that there are limitations in place. So the, the, this plan takes only one of the bedrooms from that facility towards the fourth round realistic development potential and only takes half of a bonus credit. And there's two reasons for that. The first is that the Amended Fair Housing Act requires that fifty percent of the affordable units provided as part of round four have to be available for families with children. Um, and so, you know, something like a, a supportive housing bedroom does not meet that standard. And so the idea is that you're providing a variety of homes in your community. So of the fourth round, um, five, five units have to be available to families with children. And so I'll get, we'll get to how we're going to meet that, but so in this case, involves a lot of math. Fortunately, we're working with some, single digits here, but, um, so, so in this round, the, the family with children was two units from the third round, those were considered for family, family units. Um, and so in this case, so now we're up to one point five for the R.A.M., four per ARC and two from the carryover. So that is seven and a half. And so we can only take one and a half of a bonus credit for R.A.M. because you are also limited in how many bonus credits you can take, which is twenty-five percent of your total RDP. So in, in, uh, Morris Plains, that is two point five out of the ten. So we're, got, we're up to there. Um, so now, and, and I'll explain this because, you know, obviously you can't provide half of a housing unit, but it's all, it, it all, it all is almost like a holistic view of everything and it's better to take all the credits that you can versus leaving any on the table, even if it's half of the credit. So then finally, the new, um, there's only one new, um, mechanism that's proposed in order to meet the RDP. And that is inclusionary rezoning of Block One Twelve, Block Two, which is otherwise known as One Hundred Candlewood Drive. This is a one point seven acre parcel that's located next to the Sinestra Suites. Um, it's owned by them now, um, but it's, and it's currently in the OB Office, Office Building District. Uh, it currently does not permit multifamily housing. Um, it's undersized for the OB District, it's one point seven acres where two is required. So we did, um, we're required to do an analysis of this site per the regulations, which shows that it's available, it's unencumbered by any deed restrictions or other hindrance, it's suitable. Um, it's a rest, it's a site that's nearby other residential development, it's within walking distance of businesses and bus routes and Route Ten. Um, it can be accessed from various roadways. It's developable, which means it has adequate water and sewer service, and it's approvable in that it can be a development of the size that's proposed, can be on the site consistent with state statutes such as the residential site improvement standards and JDP regulations, et cetera. So we included draft zoning for this site as part of the appendices of this report. Um, no, no act, no zoning has to be adopted at this time, but we have proposed the draft zoning and that shows a maximum of seventeen dwelling units per acre on the site, which would have a twenty percent set aside. Um, so the total development yield would be thirty units maximum, including six affordable units. And those would be required to be family rental units in order to meet the three extra of, that we need for the RDP. So then, we have one last compliance mechanism and this is that the, um, the new affordable housing law, the Amended, um, Fair Housing Act, requires that the municipality also put zoning in place to address another, to, to address twenty-five percent of the RDP. So in addition to the ten percent, that, excuse me, to, to the ten-unit RDP, you have to put zoning in place that, that will, um, really identify properties that represent realistic opportunity to redevelop in the, in the fourth round. I know this sounds similar, there is a distinction there, which is really that, um, you know, the RDP is what you have to do and this is a new regulation that is meant to account for potential additional development. And in this case, um, the borough has, uh, it actually worked out very well because those three units are also going to be at One Hundred Candlewood Drive. So the six units that are proposed at one hundred, six affordable units of One Hundred Candlewood, three of those will go towards meeting the RDP and the other three will go towards addressing the, uh, likely redevelop, likely development, um, during the future, during the next ten years. So that's where that six comes into play. Um, again, it's, it's a little bit of, um, it's a little, little, it, it, there is a distinction there and typically, and typically, most, most towns will see those on different sites, but here, because of the way that this, that this site was available and because of how the numbers worked, both of those will be on this one site. Um, so, you know, the, really the summary there is that One Hundred Candlewood will provide up to six affordable units, three will use to be addressed, the borough's fourth round RDP obligation, and three will be used as the identified twenty-five percent of the RDP for future development throughout the fourth round. Um, and then, you know, just, just to go through some of the other requirements, um, thirteen percent of all units will be very low income, this is also the case in round three, this will be two units at One Hundred Candlewood, will meet that requirement, fifty percent of all of the ten units will be low income, twenty-five percent will be rental units, fifty percent available to families, and then half of units will also be available to families, that goes back to what I was talking about with why we have to kind of, um, why we can't count all those group home and supportive housing numbers. There's also a required bedroom distribution, um, which, again, will, will comply with all U-HOP requirements. So that is what the, that this, what this plan includes and that will take the borough, um, through the, um, fourth round, which ends in twenty seventy-five. Um, the next steps here are that this, um, you know, if the planning board approves this tonight, it will go to the governing body for, um, you know, um, not so much, i- i- it's approval for the, for the process of the state, um, the state program, for the governing body, um, to, uh, adopt another resolution, support, in support of this, and then it will be submitted to the state's, um, Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program, where it is then also, every, every, um, it's, it's able to be, um, appeals can be, can be filed throughout the summer and then, you know, we'll get another look at it, see, see who comes out, if anyone has appeals for it, um, such as New Jersey Builders Association, like they did in January, um, that will all come out over, in, in, I believe, August. So, but this is, this is what we are proposing to meet that obligation. Happy to answer any questions, I know it's a, it's a, even though it's not, it's not a large number that we're dealing with here, there's a lot of rules, a lot of regulations, so happy to explain if anyone has any specific questions.
So just before you take any questions, I just want to show everybody the, um, the parcel of property that we're talking about, so this is Foxwood up here, okay, for everybody? Um, and this is the piece, this little red piece here is, is the parcel that we're talking about and this larger red piece here is, uh, that's Candlewood right there. So, uh, as you come out Table Road or Route Fifty-Three and you exit to go out to Route Ten, uh, that's where that piece of property is, behind Harley Davidson and, and whatnot over there, and the Liberty Gas station, just like, that's, wrote by the, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does that consume the whole eight acres that we got available for?
Excuse me, Mr. Hope, will you have to speak?
Did, uh, my bad. Does that consume the whole eight acres that we had available for builders?
No, that, that property is one point seven acres. Um, the realistic development potential of ten acres, um, that is based on that whole eight point two-five acres, but because of the fact that the township, because, you know, that the borough is using other mechanisms, like the supportive housing, like the carryover units from round three, means that, that not, that not all of those eight acres have to be rezoned or used for inclusionary housing.
And is there a simpler way to express the, my, my question's going to sound weird. You start out with a hundred and six units being approved by the court.
Mm-hmm.
And then you came up with ten.
We went through that vacant, uh, I was going to bring this up, vacant land adjustment?
Yes.
So we had thirty-six acres that the state gave us that recognized that, oh, you can build on these thirty-six acres.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. And we're like, no, that's not true.
Yeah, well, we, we brought that down to eight.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Hundred or more parcels of, of pieces of property, lot by lot, we went through to, to get it down. Like she said, some were easements, some, uh, had environmental constraints, some were, uh, open space or parks.
Right.
And so this is what we came down with. That's, that's where your drastic.
Right.
Lowering of the, the number comes from.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would just add to that is the one, another way to look at this is that getting the, with the initial, um, calculation of the prospective need, that was done, that was the first part of this process and that was done in response to the Department of Community Affairs coming out with their number. And so that, that was, you know, looking at ways, at, at, at the calculation that DCA had provided and what, whether we thought there was issues with that, which we thought there were issues and the courts agreed with us. So then, then we were assigned this number of a hundred and six prospective.
Mm.
And so then, as part of the preparation of the plan, and it actually is really a compliance mechanism for meeting that one oh-six, that's where the vacant land adjustment comes in. So there's some similarities in that process, but they are really two different processes, they look at two slightly different things, but the, the difference is also that with the, the number that is between the one oh-six and the ten, really the one oh-six and the thirteen, that's going to, that's known as the unmet need. Um, that's not something you have to, you don't have to, to, to have proactive, um, you don't, you don't have to, to identify pro, you know, sites in your plan like we are with One Hundred Candlewood, but that, and the way that we are meeting that technically is, is, the way, the way that we're complying with that is through the vacant land adjustment. So that one oh-six number is still the official obligation and so the vacant land adjustment is used as a, as a compliance mechanism. And not every town, you know, I'm, I, I work in many towns where we didn't do a vacant land adjustment because they're just as, they're not this kind of tightly built, built-out suburb, um, you know, where there is a street grid, there's, there's highway pattern, stuff like that, so it just is.
Jefferson.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, and then, you know, not even to talk about rural, more rural areas, but so, you know, it really is the way, and this has been in the law for a while and the way it's, it's to, it's because they understand that especially in more, you know, it's train station suburb, places like that, there, there really is not that much land to go around, so.
Two square acre, two square miles, it's not much to play with.
So, so my question would be, and maybe you don't have the answer, and thank you for what you just did.
Yeah.
That was a lot of information.
I hope it was helpful.
So the property is owned by the hotel?
Yes.
So then the hoteler's the one that has to build this?
No, no, they don't have to. Um, I, and I don't know, I, I actually do not know if, what the, what, whether there's been discussions or anything with that, but that property just, they can, is, is what, is where, what has to do. It's not saying that, there's no, there's no agreement in place with them, as far as I'm aware.
We're just zoning it.
We're just zoning it.
We're just, the borough just zones it.
Yes.
Whatever happens, a building may buy it, Sinestra Suites may put it up, a private person may buy.
Yes.
Who knows?
Exactly.
All we're required to do is zone it.
Provide the opportunity, that's all.
Exactly. To provide a realistic opportunity.
And if the opportunity never happens, it doesn't matter.
No, we have, we have a ten-year obligation.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so within ten years of.
Somebody will take care of it.
You're confident.
And, and what will happen is that.
The builder's already complaining, we don't have enough for them.
What will happen in ten years is that either the, the units will be provided or the, the borough, in the fifth round, God, can't even think about that, um, will, you know, you have to, you have to either demonstrate why it still presents a realistic opportunity or you have to make up the unit somewhere. Um, so we're not there yet, but the obligation on the borough at this time is to rezone it, not just put an overlay on it to actually, you know, fully rezone the property to allow for, um, this type of multifamily development at the prescribed acreage, excuse me, at this prescribed density to build it.
So I do have one question, thank you, Charlie, very much, very, very good, appreciate it.
Happy to help.
So the, the last, the last part of this is I'm reading through the plan that you have, page thirty-three, um, there's something in there about the, the spending plan?
Yes.
Can you just explain a little bit about what that is and why we do or do not have to?
Sure, absolutely. Um, so a spending plan is typically a requirement of the affordable, of, of the fourth round, um, housing elements and fair share plans. And a spending plan is where a municipality details, um, really what they expect to go into their affordable housing trust fund, how they're going to spend it, et cetera. Um, Morris Plains at some point made a policy decision that the borough would not have their own affordable housing trust fund. They would not manage the trust fund and so, so the borough does not have one. The borough collects development fees as appropriate in accordance with the law and is in full compliance with the collection of development fees. However, um, there wa, there is an option in the law for towns to opt out in this way. However, there was, there is an option in the law for towns to opt out in this way, and in that case, the monies go to the state, and the state manages and spends the money. So because of, there is no Affordable Housing Trust Fund in Morris Plains, there is no requirement for a spending plan as part of this, this master plan.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board?
I just, I just wanna say before we do this, we started this, we started the Affordable Housing, or I started the Affordable Housing Committee, put it together back in 2024, and we met for the first time, I believe it was in March or April of 2024, and that's just from learning on the last round, right, and being prepared for this and getting to this kind of number. I also want to reiterate that, you know, the, the borough, and I say the borough as the, as the mayor and the council are certainly not against the affordable housing, it's the density of the housing because these builders are able to buy, uh, build five units for every affordable unit, right? So at the beginning of this, you heard me saying that 137 units times five is 600 and something, that was a real possibility and it, and it still could be a possibility. But through the meetings and knowing literally lot by lot to see what these lots were, whether they were open space, whether they were parks, whether they, uh, part of somebody else's property, whatever the case may have been, to get it down to the eight acres from the 37, or 36 acres rather, was, you know, that was, that was a pretty hard task, and I think the borough is in very good position, I think having this piece of property here, I think was very good, like, like the tech team said, we had a short period of time to come up with this, once we did get our number from May 13th to June 30th.
June 6th, yeah, yeah.
60th, right, when I broke, and, and, and we did it. So I, I want to thank everybody that was on the Affordable Housing Committee, that spent their time and volunteering, you know, hours and hours to, to get us to where we are today, along with the council and, so, so, you know, some monumental feat, let's say something that I feel very good about, and the position of our own a very good place there, so.
Yeah.
I mean, kudos for doing it as well, if you think of the impact of that number of housing on traffic, on just everything.
Fire department?
Fire department, services, I mean.
Huge.
Huge.
And one, one thing I would add to Mr. Mayor is that the 137 initial was reduced to 106 by the courts, and that, barring some major, major change to the whole law, which we don't anticipate, that can't go back up to 137. So, you know, you're really, the part of that first process is really like looking at how it was calculated and recalibrating that baseline in order to make it fair, to, to really reflect what the town, what the borough had available. So I think that, you know, just wanna, just wanna note that because I know here we're looking at getting it down, back down to 10, but those, that is set in stone by the judge, that 106.
Why would that make a difference? What if they said 500? It, it, we, we simply don't have the land for them to have done anything, it's unrealistic.
Well, the insane part, what do you mean?
I'm saying it would matter if 136 or 106 is six of one, if there's another, at that point, it doesn't matter because we, we didn't have the space based on the ratio of five to one, to have done any more, more than what we're saying.
No, absolutely, and that, and that's, and that's what, that's what we're putting forward, I just want to make sure, you know, I just wanted just to clarify that, you know, that, 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 because there's going to be, there's, there's these organizations who look at these plans, they objected at the first time, and we were successful the first time, so, you know, I have no reason to doubt that we won't be again, but, you know, that's just the way where you're, you know, get that obligation down and then you have the compliance mechanisms in place. So that's, you know, that, that, that's, that's where we were careful in the first, the first, or earlier this year.
Mayor, I'd also just like to thank you for two things, one for the transparency tonight, but also for the education meeting that I wasn't able to come to, I really appreciate that as well, I do think it's helpful to understand the huge long process that this has been, and everything that, that the borough has done to actually get to the right answer, I think it's important that people understand that.
Thanks, Andrew, but I, you know, I, I don't like taking any credit for anything really, it's, it's, it's the committees and the boards and the council and our professionals, really, it, it takes everybody and...
Excuse me, Jason.
It takes everybody and it's really a true statement, so, you know, thanks everybody, thank you for coming.
And that is very true for everybody too, he's got hours and hours and days and weeks preparing all of it, just a lot.
Going over the, Liz and Frank and I sat down and we went over every single lot and block. Every easement, every piece of property that has wetlands on it, it was hours and months.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah.
And we could not have done it without Frank because my God, he knows every inch of this.
Absolutely.
But that was, with Liz's help, I mean, it was huge.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the, that, that was why, you know, in that, in the, when the law was written, it said the DCA's numbers are non-binding, and that was, that was their way of saying, you know more about your towns than we do. And so they were like, they, they listened, they really, they listened and the judges listened, when, in the first, and then, then the vacant land adjustment, and that, you know, when you are this thorough, as we, you know, our firm takes pride in how we do these plans, and especially in Morris Plains where they had help with it, where you could help with the committee, you know, we have every right to book it that they will see it this way again, so.
And the other thing is you have to make sure that, that these, so all of open space, this is, is this actually, it's called a RSE, it's your recreation and open space inventory, that all of the open space is actually on that inventory or you can't count it. So anytime you have properties that you've acquired through grants or open space trust funds, you have to make sure that that is on that plan, otherwise you won't be able to count it as, you know, already developed or not available.
Or, or that it's used for a legitimate public purpose.
Right.
Because not every piece of public land can go on the RSE because there's, you know, you're using it for municipal purposes, but that's also considered a valid, of, you know, it's not developable if you have some kind of utility on it, or you have some kind of, you know, public, really something that serves a public purpose, so, yep, absolutely.
Do you have anything to add?
No, I think she did a great, I'm not trying to deck my job here, but I couldn't explain it any better than she did, she's intimately involved and she did a great presentation.
Thank you, at least.
You're welcome.
So before you open it up for a, for the public, I just want to read the introduction of this, the Fair Share Plan. This housing element, this was prepared by Liz Laney and, and Rauchel, but this housing element and fair share plan has been prepared on behalf of the Borough of Morris Plains, Morris County, New Jersey, in accordance with the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. The New Jersey Fair Hou, Fair Housing Act has amended applicable rules established by the Council on Affordable Housing and the Administrative Office of the Courts directive. This document addresses the borough's plan to address its 2025, 2020, 35, 2035 obligation to provide its fair share of the regional need for affordable housing. This fourth round housing element and fair share plan will be submitted to the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program and subsequently to Superior Court for a determination as to its compliance with the requirements. The municipal land use law requires that the municipal master plan include a housing element in order for the municipality to exercise the power to zone and regulate land use. The housing element and fair share plan is adopted by the Borough Planning Board and endorsed by the governing body. It's intended to achieve the goal of meeting the borough's obligation to plan and regulate land use, provide for fair share, for the, for a fair share of the regional need of affordable housing. Morris Plains remains committed to meeting its constitutional obligation to provide through its land use regulation, a realistic opportunity for a fair share of the region's present and prospective needs for housing for low and moderate income families. This housing element and fair share plan document outlines how the borough will address its affordable housing obligations. Thank you, Chair.
One, one thing I'd like to add, Mayor, is, is that when, when this is accepted and approved, that will give us immunity for any organization, for any builder to come in and say, you haven't met your obligation, now we're gonna force this on you like they did with the M and M Development and the JMF Development.
Yes, this is, that's a very good point, just the actions that are taken tonight and by the governing body, doing that before June 30th gives the borough immunity. So, you know, as long as, because we are, you know, you're, we're participating in this process, we're, we're going through this process, there will be opportunities, you know, for these, for people to challenge it potentially, but none, nothing is, the, 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 the borough in this process keeping their immunity.
And just a, one clarification, so this entire document, when we adopt it, will become an amendment to the master plan.
Correct.
So then it'll be, it'll be part of that public document that everybody will have access.
It'll be an element of the master. There'll be an element of the master, but it will, it will really, it will really replace the third round with housing element.
Right, for the clues of the route in this.
Yes, exactly, exactly. The only other thing, just, just one thing, just administratively, is that we did catch, you know, a couple few typos, we're going to fix those, and Liz will be providing Karen with a clean copy for adoption, for endorsement by the governing body, just a few, nothing, nothing substantive at all, but, you know, big document, a few little typos, so Liz will be providing that. Yes, yep, absolutely. So, and I don't, they're not even, you know, they're really just little things here and there, nothing that changes the contents of the plan.
Before you hear it from the public, just let me say who the Affordable Housing Committee was, it was Dave Schultz was the chair, myself, Art Broom was on it, Mike Dresler, Mike Garabaglia, Bill Houston, Suma Kusky, Ed Boozak, Bill Ryden is our engineer, and Liz Laney was our planner.
And again, that was hours and hours and hours of the time.
And that document, that's a pretty big one, it was 176 pages, it's a book.
You got it, yeah.
Does any of the board members have any other questions? Any of the public have questions?
We do. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Joanne, do you again, 31 Canfield Place? Okay, so the way I understand it is the borough has to supply or have a space for six low-income housing units, and we have this lot that we don't own, so if this person who owns these, this lot doesn't want to sell it or develop it, how are we complying with that six unit?
The municipality can only rezone it, we don't have the ability to develop it, so we, the zoning creates an, an ability to develop it and comply.
Okay, but if we don't supply those six units in the next 10 years, then what happens?
Then we have to, then you'll have to address them in the fifth round.
So, so I would just, just to clarify, the, 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 the language, the municipal's ob, the municipality's obligation is to provide a realistic opportunity for the development of those units. And that does not mean that the municipality has to build them themselves. It means that, it means that, and that's why, this is the reason, the municipality has to rezone the property, because right now it doesn't permit this. So rezoning the property, going in there, permitting the level of density that I described with the six affordable units set aside, that is the municipal obligation at this time. And that, by doing that, if this, you know, when this plan is, is finalized and adopted, that is how the municipality provides that realistic opportunity. Okay, but if for some reason in 10 years that doesn't happen, then is there some kind of?
Mechanism?
Yeah, we, like I said, then if it has not developed by the fifth round, which again, long time from now, but 2020, 2035, and if the rules stay the same, what would happen then is that municipality has to either demonstrate that there is still a realistic opportunity for development, and I don't know, you know, and who knows, you know, there's a million things that could happen between now and then, that why it didn't develop, but you have to either demonstrate it's a realistic opportunity for development still, which, you know, it may, it may very well be, or provide a different site, but, but it, there's, it's not, that, that's the only obligation. Okay, just, you said there were eight acres total that were deemed, you know, wouldn't it be prudent to approve rezoning for all eight acres so that there's more likely to be somebody developing?
So some of those acres are already zoned for affordable.
Okay, so why do we have to rezone this one?
Yeah, I'm still gonna have a future, there are ones coming up, so you still need a spot.
Okay, so those are already zoned?
Some of them are residential, I mean, you might not want that and, you know...
Well, I didn't want McDonald's when I got that, so.
But that was zoned for, you know, well, that's...
Um, yeah, that, because, the, 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 the answer is that, that's, that's not what the law requires, providing this realistic opportunity, and with all the analysis that was just, you know, that was done by the Affordable Housing Committee, by the professionals, you know, this was determined to be the realistic site. Because for example, some of those eight acres, they, they, they are part of the vacant land adjustment because they are not able to be excluded through, by the, what the law says, but probably how you can exclude property. For example, there's, there's three properties that are all adjacent on a residential block that are...
Do you know where that is?
It's in, it's, it's in this, but they're, they're not, they're not considered, that, that's part of this, they're part of the, the overall vacant land adjustment, but that was, you know, and then there's also borough-owned land that was also not determined to be considered the most suitable site. So I, you know, and, and it's also just this, having this site here, and again, all it has to be done, it has to be rezoned. Okay, seems like a lot of work to have nothing happen for maybe 10 years and then have to start all over again, a lot of money and time, people's lives.
That's what the law requires.
Yeah, I mean, it is a lot.
You can, you can reach out to your legislators and tell them, thank you very much.
Well, I'll be voting.
Thank you very much to all the state legislators that signed this in the law and the government too.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carolyn Bennett, 19D, and? Hi, I'm piggybacking off of what Joanne was just saying, because I don't think I'm fully understanding, so maybe this is for you, I don't know, so, the eight acres that are currently deemed developable, I think that's the right word, you're saying some of them are already zoned to be able to fit these six housing units, so can you just reword why we need to rezone this other pop, piece of land, because I'm not...
I don't know if that's, is, it's...
So I'll, so some of it's a recycle center, right?
Right, that was deemed developable?
That's already on our...
There are portion, so, so the, with the lands that are deemed developable are thus, because there's a section in the state statute that says what type of lands can be excluded from your vacant land adjustment, and those are a number, you know, and, and your vacant land adjustment is supposed to examine lands that are owned by, that are owned by the municipality, lands that are vacant, which is class one on property tax records, a few other things, well, I don't think it's in Morris Plains, but it's like farm, farms, et cetera, in Planning Area 1, Metropolitan Planning Area, et cetera. And then you look at each of those, and there's reasons that a property can be excluded, and those reasons include if it has environmental constraints on it, if it has a deed restriction on it, if it's used for a legitimate public purpose, but if a property, you know, for example, they're a cycling center property, it's, it, there's still a portion of it that's not developed and not deed restricted, that's, that's, that's big enough that the state requires it to be counted. So that's where that comes in, so, yeah.
So ready to just brown hash more? Up here?
Yeah.
That's like the recycle center, across here, this is a 260 table, that's already affordable there, and we have a piece that's right next to the, who's, they're looking to develop, so, all the, all the developed properties right basically in that area for affordable. There are some steep slopes there, there's some, also some conscriptions.
So I would also notice that, is that an overlay zone? Is that, or is that now?
No, AF1, AF2.
AF1, okay. So then the answer is that it's part of prior rounds, and that it can be double counted.
So anything in red is?
No.
Commercial.
Okay. And that's what we're saying, we want to rezone.
Just a little portion right here.
Okay, I don't know if I'm just not understanding, because I keep hearing the eight acres, so I'm like, oh, eight acres, then I'm hearing that some of it's already zoned for this, and if the requirement is just to rezone something, it's just, I'm not understanding and I don't know if I'm asking it in an in-...
Actually, I, I don't think I care, as long as we're not told we need to put down 106 units, so.
So here, the answer is that you have to provide for the realistic opportunity for 10 new units. So seven of those units are through the supportive housing through the prior round, so three new units have to be provided, and if something is already zoned for inclusionary housing, it's part of a prior round or something like that, it's not considered a new unit. So even though something, even... So even though something, even it's considered developable land, but it has to, we need to create new opportunities based on the amount of developable land, and that's why a new property has to be included.
But, but even then, right, you, so you went through this whole process of elimination. You essentially got down to eleven lots in town that make up the eight, right? And some of those are like big enough, you can put stuff together, and some of them are not big enough, you can do much with. But that makes up the eight.
Mm-hmm, yes, the eight point two six, yes.
Okay, I think I might just need to get, I have nothing against affordable housing, I mean, I probably qualify for it. So it's nothing of that at all, it's just, I don't, this is all very new to me, so I'm just trying to understand it.
If you're interested, the, the full document, which I do not have in front of me, um, the full document has a methodology explanation for the, how the vacant land adjustment was conducted.
It's great sleeping reading.
I also, I, I was not understanding, so let's say we move forward, we've rezoned it, the red, that's.
The white candle.
Yes, I'm tracking, we get rezoned, and then, I wasn't following the conversation that you guys were having, if the hotel doesn't want to give it up, but I think the quote was that if, if it's rezoned, the builders will come. What does that mean?
So there's an opportunity there for, for, I think, Sinesda Suites to develop it themselves.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
They may develop it themselves, there's an opportunity for them to sell it to a developer and have a developer develop on that way also. There's a ten-year time period that we have, that a builder or somebody has to satisfy this obligation, right, twenty thirty-five?
Mm-hmm.
If that does not happen, it gets rolled into our next obligation from twenty thirty-five to twenty forty-four.
So what role do, do that, does that property owner play in any of this?
No.
So they just get told after this is passed, hey, we rezoned property that you're owning, that's going to be this, and then it's up to a builder to come and say, hey, I want to buy this because it's rezoned.
Or they, or they may want to build themselves and make the money, or they may want to sell the property because now it may become more valuable and sell the property to a builder.
It's more valuable than it is anywhere. I'll say maybe towards a million, now towards three million, whatever, right, so.
Just because it has this rezoning?
Yes.
Just because.
Because the builder has the opportunity of not putting three units on there, of putting thirty units on there.
And not, and not only just putting something like an office on there, where properties are in a big market, yeah.
So, so, you know, and, and those other units that are not affordable, he can charge exorbitant rents like they do everywhere else. So this is a win-win for a builder to come in.
Again, it's five to one.
Yeah.
And I would, again, you know, to go back to what I was saying to the last member of the public is that the borough's obligation is to provide a realistic opportunity for the development of the affordable housing and by fully rezoning this property to explicitly permit that, they are providing that realistic opportunity because the law rec, does recognize, just, they said that you can't control the free market. So, you know, that's what this realistic opportunity is about.
Okay, and so once this is rezoned and builder who is not, we don't know who that is, that is this mysterious builder would come, buy the land, or they would build it themselves, they just need to check the box that is the six units of affordable housing and then how many others can they build there?
It is being rezoned for a maximum yield of thirty residential units, of which twenty percent have to be affordable set aside. They cannot build more than thirty units on the property under the proposed zoning that is part of this plan.
And it's the town that would hold them accountable for not building thirty-one?
Correct, yeah, they have to come to, they have to come to the board and everything.
I know it all sounds very, like, odd.
No, but this is, you know, this all goes through the courts, it's these settlement agreements with the courts.
And then they would have to come to the planning board and show, this is what we're planning to build.
Yeah.
How many square feet, how many parking spaces?
And there's the, and, and if they do get to that point, you know, all of the affordable units have to be deed restricted for a certain amount of time, they have to provide the correct amount of bedrooms, they have to say what level of affordability they're going to be, moderate, low, very low. So, you know, there is a lot of oversight in this process from the town's perspective.
This is the bottom row of the ladder.
Yes.
And, and this is, this is looked at every single year, every one of our affordable developments.
That's a great point.
They have to submit records and show that they are still maintaining, that these people still are eligible. It's a huge, huge administrative.
Process.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I also.
Did I say something that made it seem like I didn't think that?
No, I just want you to understand that. It's not just you build them, there is constant, constant oversight on whether or not they are maintaining their obligation, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'd like to have full confidence in that one hundred percent, like, I wish I could say that I am a hundred percent confident in that and maybe this is a much bigger scale than recent conversations I've done. It, it's just, there's a lot of things top of mind, so I appreciate that and that is probably all.
Carolyn, I'll just say that as one of the newer members of the planning board, it, it is a lot to take in, right? And it took me a while to, I don't even want to say understand it because there, there's a lot of information, but, um, it, it, you're not alone in hearing this information for the first time and trying to, um, evaluate it all, so. Um, but, you know, I've, I've looked through it a lot as, as the other members of the planning board have. Um, and I, I do think it, it does make sense, um, what we're trying to do, um, and what we are doing. And the, the numbers, um, you know, they, they spend a lot of time working, working this stuff out, so I think it is the, the best option. Then, again, as the mayor said, right, it is a state obligation that, that we are required to meet.
Yeah, no, I, I don't argue any of that, I, I don't, I don't have any intent in arguing anything right now. It is really me just learning, so I appreciate it. And I don't discredit any of the hours, 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 hours that has been put into it. Um, I appreciate all of that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Any other questions? Okay. So the next order of business then is to adopt resolution twenty-five dash twelve.
Officially close to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Close the public session.
Okay, we're going to close that session. Okay? The next order of business then is to adopt resolution twenty-five dash twelve. Each board member has received a copy by email and hard copy. Ms. Silver, can you please read the resolution for us?
A resolution adopting causing element and fair share plan, amending the master plan for the Borough of Morris Plains. Whereas NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash twenty-eight authorizes the planning board to repair and after a public hearing, adopt or amend a master plan or components thereof to guide the use of land within the municipality in a manner that protects public health and safety and promotes the public welfare. And whereas the Borough of Morris Plains Planning Board conducted a public hearing on June sixteen, twenty twenty-five to consider the adoption of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan of June twenty twenty-five entitled Borough of Morris Plains, New Jersey Housing Element and Fair Share Plan Fourth Round, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty, to twenty thirty-five, and prepared by Elizabeth C. Lahaney, uh, professional planner known as the Housing Element. And whereas a notice of said public hearing was published, duly published in the official newspaper and written notices were served as required by the provisions of NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash thirteen. And whereas at said, at said public hearing, enforced documents presented to the public and members of the public were given an opportunity to be heard. And whereas the board finds the housing element is consistent with the physical, economic, and social development of the Borough of Morris Plains and the purposes of municipal land use law as stated in NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash two, now therefore be resolved by the Land Use Board of the Borough of Morris Plains and the County of Morris and State of New Jersey on the sixteenth day of June twenty twenty-five as follows. The board hereby amends the Borough of Master Plant, the Borough of Morris Plains Master Plan to adopt the Housing Element in the form considered by the board and attached tier two. And the Planning Board Secretary is directed to record this date, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, as the date of its adoption. Two, the Planning Board Secretary is authorized and directed to provide notice of this action in accordance with NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash thirteen. The Planning Board Secretary is hereby directed to forward a copy of the Housing Element of June twenty twenty-five together with a copy of the resolution of the plant, of the resolution to the Office of the Planning Advocacy and to the Morris County Planning Board as required by law. This resolution shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution adopting the amendment to the Borough of Morris Plains Housing Element and Fair Share Plan Element of the Master Plan?
So moved.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Karen, roll call, please.
Mr. Woganblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Bezzle?
Yes.
Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mrs. McCloskey?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, was Mrs. McCloskey and Mayor Carr?
Correct.
Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'd like to close this portion of the agenda. Our next scheduled planning board meeting is July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. I have the motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everybody, everybody have a great night. Much luck.